This is a special meeting of the Immigrant Affairs, Civil Rights and Equity Committee. Today is March 9th, 2020. It's 1:00 PM. We're in the John Ferraro Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall. We will take public comment first. I'm going to call up Arnold Sacks and Eric Previn. After that, Alejandra Morales, Amanda Schafft, Andre Barrios. Mr. Sacks, please come up. You've got two minutes. Mr. Previn, please prepare yourself so you don't come up and ask 100 questions like you do every time. Just be prepared to come up and speak for two minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sadio. It doesn't seem to be a quorum. I'm glad you showed up. At least you had the guts to show up. So, the Equity Committee, what is equity? That's like an investment, right, versus equality? So, I read this agenda, and I really didn't think we was getting public comment, but I'll take it. So, I'm thinking about equity as an investment. So, what is the city investing in? I know like the county has an investment that's really got me worried. It's about bioscience. Somebody wants the county employees to invest in bioscience research. That's pretty scary when you have to have employees invest in bioscience research, a county agency that's going to invest in bioscience, when there's so many schools and other agencies that are doing research on, I don't know, anything biological. That being said, what is justice? What is equal justice? What is an act? And it says Los Angeles. The Los Angeles Justice Fund, is that the city or the county? How is it spent? How is it assessed? Who has oversight of the Justice Fund? There's no community input statements on any of these items. So, if you have these items on these agendas, and I've seen this often enough, and there's no community input, what's the sense of voting on an item in a committee if you have no community input because it's going to affect the community? Who's a citizen? What is the letter of the law versus the intent of the law? Does anybody know the difference between a codified law versus an uncodified law? What does the city attorney say? Why do you have motions that you don't read into the record? How is that justice? If you don't read the motions into the record, then there's no official, there's no official record of that motion, so there's no action that needs to be taken. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Are you the only one present today? Is there any other council members present, or it's just you? Mr. City Attorney, for the record.
Do you have comments? May I ask you to come up?
No, I'm going to make the comments. I'm trying to make sure that it's clear we're not in quorum.
Questions like you like to do, please take advantage of your opportunity to speak.
Okay, I will. I will. It's just that I know today we're nominating.
Some things are abundantly evident, and so I'm not going to engage you in that. I let you know before that you had an opportunity to come up and speak, and you like to come up and ask questions. I'm not going to engage you in that. Things are abundantly evident, so we're not going to do that. Please go take, take advantage of this opportunity to share with us your perspectives and insights so we can have your community input.
Yeah, I appreciate that, sir. It's just that today we're nominating two very distinguished Angelinos to various, including, I believe, Civil Rights, the Civil and Human Rights Department. We're going to have a new executive director, which is Capri Maddox, and I want to make sure that when we have meetings, we do specify whether or not there's a quorum. It's fine. Capri Maddox is a longtime insider. She started working for Viarigosa, and then obviously she worked for Mike Fuer as an Assistant City Attorney. She's a, she's a very well-worn city insider, and so if that is the goal of the Civil Rights Commission, I think she'll, she'll do an admirable job. The thing that concerns me is that on a day when Mitchell Englander has been surrendered to himself to the FBI, I think he surrendered in January, we've got allegations that he was taking all sorts of, we all knew, but paybacks and kickbacks and various things, money in an envelope in Las Vegas. Sounds horrible, but I just want to give all these new appointees the opportunity to back away politely and quietly and decline to serve because I feel like we're in a transitional period where all of the 14, 15 council members who went along with Englander's egregious antics are going to be, I don't want to say come to Jesus because I'm not really a super religious fellow, but there's going to be a clearing out of some of the malfeasance, I hope. Now, it's possible that Englander is simply going to run into the huddle and fall on the ball.
Your comments are limited to the purview of the committee, please.
Committee is civil rights, and of course, he was the civil rights violator-in-chief. He used to, if you remember, sir, in front of you and others, violate public speakers like a, like a Nazi in a horrible way. He would just cut their mic and insult them and have police surround them.
Mr. Matthews, I mean, Mr. Previn, thank you for your comments. Can people line up, please? Alejandra Morales, Amanda Schafft, Andre Barrios, Carolina Goodman, Chelsea Bell, Jose Luis Garcia, Joseph Vilaia, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexandra Morales. I'm the Policy Manager for Garesin. Garesin is the largest nonprofit that serves the Central American community in the United States. I want to start with, you know, understanding responsibility. A lot of our year, in the last two years, has been to fully, you know, grow our support in the immigrant community, not just in support with words, but with actions. And part of that has been our commitment to work with the County of Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, and yourself. And we want to just highlight that, you know, that for us, you know, there are sleepless nights because we understand the hurdles that are ahead of us. And if in 2017, through the Los Angeles Justice Fund, we wanted to address the attacks that we foresaw were going to come upon our community, now more than ever, we understand that as TPS is under attack, as our DACA community is under attack, we need to double down in defending our immigrant community. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with some of our parents, concerned parents in the Los Angeles area. I briefed them on the Los Angeles Justice Fund, and I think that on the ground, it's really important to note that we're asking before the city that we need your support more than ever now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Schafft. I'm a Managing Attorney at Immigrant Defenders Law Center. I'm here to urge you to renew the Los Angeles Justice Fund in a way that maintains the current infrastructure. At this point, the infrastructure has allowed for the hiring and training of 41 staff members, 29 attorneys. And I would like to note that, you know, an open case means an individual is still here in the United States. Thirty-one percent of the cases represented by the Los Angeles Justice Fund have been released on bond from Adelanto Detention Facility. That means that those individuals are back with their families, they're working, and their open case means they're here in the United States. Advocates have no control over the life of a case in immigration court, and the funding for only existing cases will not speed up the rate of closure of those cases, but what it will do is not allow the organizations to maintain the current infrastructure that they've had that the city funded so much money for. And we will not be able to continue to accept new cases from the community who knows about this program and who are still in detention, who are still in removal proceedings and need our help.
Hello there. My name is Andre Barrios. I'm with the California Immigration Policy Center. I also want to urge you to renew the Justice Fund. I just want to highlight the last report compiled on the Justice Fund demonstrated that Los Angeles Justice Fund Legal Service Providers have accepted a total of 528 clients from 32 different nationalities for direct representation and screened approximately 1,700 individuals. And so, 438 of those cases, which is 83% of those cases, remain open as a result of excessive immigration court backlogs and the complexity of immigration legal claims available to clients. And so, therefore, it's crucial that we move forward with funding. I just want to repeat again, 438 of those cases remain open. That's 438 people who are still here, are still fighting, able to be with their families, and I think that's really important. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Carolina Goodman, League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. The League strongly stands in opposition to family separation and urges you to renew the city's commitment to the LA Justice Fund so that longtime residents of Los Angeles could return to their families and jobs. I also volunteer with Freedom for Immigrants. We are not lawyers. Our visits to Adelanto are purely humanitarian. In the waiting room, we see families who made the long trek to bring cheer to their loved ones. We imagine many more who are not able to visit because of work or family responsibilities. The Angelinos, who would be served by the LA Justice Fund, live in prison-like conditions in spite of the fact that this is a civil issue. They are valued members of their families and communities and contribute to the well-being of our city. America stands for due process. Everyone at risk of deportation deserves a fair day in court, even if they cannot afford an attorney. We urge you to develop a multi-year program. Thank you.
Hello. This is Jose Luis Garcia from Esperanza Immigrant Rights Project. I'm Managing Attorney for Representation. We are here to ask you to, and urge you to renew the LA Justice Fund, not only for funding for current cases, but to take on new cases to be able to represent more people in the community. We also ask for an expansion of a model that provides access to all immigrants regardless of their background, and emphasizing those that are in, most vulnerable, specifically those that are in detention. This fund's impact doesn't, it just goes beyond the individual immigrants that are served by the Justice Fund, but it goes to help thousands of Angelinos because it impacts their spouses, their children, and family members. This has allowed people to be able to stay out of homelessness and be more food secure, allowed to continue cooperation with law enforcement if they were victims of crimes, and overall contribute to the overall economy of the city. For this reason, we ask you that, and we urge that the LA Justice Fund be renewed.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Yella. We chair the Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights. We generally align ourselves with the comments of my colleagues. I just wanted to highlight three points. One, the County of Los Angeles is likely to be moving with a motion to actually refund and provide bridge funding for this program. The Mayor Garcetti has also committed for potential funding for this program in the upcoming budget. Lastly, the Adelanto Detention Center, the City of Adelanto has decided to expand that detention center, so it's likely that the number of folks that will be needing help will increase in that area. And so, for all those reasons, we respectfully request for this committee to move forward and renew this program. Thank you.
Let me have Chelsea Bell, Katrina Beckley, Katrina Matheson, Laura Jones, Maria Mello, and Ming Tany Gawa-Lau.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Sadio. My name is Chelsea Bell. I'm a Removal Defense Attorney with the Immigrant Defenders Law Center. I work for LAJF, as Amanda Schafft just spoke, and I just wanted to clarify a few things. I think that it's easy to see statistics and not necessarily easy to see how they relate to the life of someone who lives here in LA County. When I hear that 83% of the cases are still open, that's a huge success because on average, a detained case is pushed to that system in four to six months. I can't even get a USAS FOIA request returned to me within less than six months. I can't pop a case in six months. So, to have someone be able to keep their case open, not only to fight it, but to be with their family. I have a client who has five US citizen kids, a US citizen wife. He got bonded out. He was able to go back to his job. He had TPS for almost 20 years. There's no way without an LAJF attorney, he would have been able to return back to LA County, and almost certainly, his family would have suffered even more. I urge you to, to not only refund LAJF, but continue to fund it in a sustainable way.
Honorable Councilmen Sadio, my name is Katrina Beckley, and I'm a Staff Attorney at the Esperanza Immigrant Rights Project. The LAJF is what allowed me to transition from being a full-time transactional music attorney to being a full-time immigration attorney at a nonprofit. A year ago, I worked in music, taking pro bono cases where I could. Through LAJF grantees, namely the Removal Defense Corps collaboration between Southwestern and Loyola Law Schools, I received intensive training, technical support, and mentorship. I'm one of the people who has seen the entire LAJF process through education, recruitment to taking pro bono cases, employment at Esperanza, and collaborating with other organizations that offer post-release support. We need to continue funding these initiatives so others can make those decisions as well. The vast majority of those detained at Adelanto do not have representation. You have the power to change that, return people to their families, allowing them to provide for their families, and helping to mitigate the trauma inflicted on often United States citizen children. Family separation is not just happening at the border. It's happening right here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katrina Matheson. I'm a private citizen. In the past, I volunteered with the unaccompanied minors at a shelter called Casa Libre. And my experience there was that I could see firsthand the heartbreak and the cruelty of people who qualify for special protections or, you know, special pathways within the legal system that are set up specifically to help them, who don't receive that help because they don't have access to adequate legal counsel. Same with the people who are in detention now, who are asylum seekers. I truly do not understand the purpose of having special protections and special pathways within the law set up to benefit a certain group of people and then make it impossible for them to access that help. I really don't understand it. It's very dark. It's cruel, and it's heartbreaking. So, I urge you to please continue to fund
Hi, my name is Laura Jones, and I'm a third year at UCLA School of Law. The LA Justice Fund has been critical to responding to and spearheading efforts to mitigate the administration's inhumane immigration policies. After my first year of law school, I spent the summer working at a family detention center, trying to get families out of detention in order to be able to fight their cases. I bore witness to the systemic family separation and the lack of psychological resources for separated families while in detention. The Justice Fund is the epitome of what the city can and must do to protect its robust immigrant community from the administration's policies, especially for those who are currently detained. Since 2017, the LA Justice Fund has successfully laid a foundation for a robust and collaborative deportation defense network across Los Angeles, but without renewal, the foundation will be lost. I urge you to continue to fund the Justice Fund.
Hi, my name is Ming Tany Gawa-Lau, and as a student at UCLA Law and a member of Law Students for Immigrant Justice, I strongly believe that the Justice Fund should be renewed with no carve-outs for people convicted of certain crimes. Due process is a human right that extends to everyone, not just those the courts have deemed deserving. We know that the criminal justice system is unfairly biased against Black and Brown people. Denying these same people an attorney to fight deportation further exacerbates this problem and victimizes the already vulnerable. Currently, Justice Fund attorneys can spend up to a third of the time of their entire case checking to see if their client is ineligible for representation because they fall under a carve-out. This wastes valuable attorney time and resources. Providing unconditional universal representation would make representation not only more just, but more efficient. Funding the LA Justice Fund without carve-outs is necessary for us to build a fair and efficient immigration system, especially amidst the Trump administration's relentless attacks on immigrant communities. Due process cannot wait.
Hello. My name is Maria Mello. My pronouns are she, hers, hers. I am a Policy Manager at the Los Angeles LGBT Center, and I am also an LGBT immigrant. That is why I'm here today. I'm here to speak and voice a strong support for the Los Angeles Justice Fund renewal. The fight is far from over, and LAJF can only continue with your support. Countless LGBT people, Los Angeles immigrant families, children, survivors of domestic violence are being sent to unsafe conditions in detention centers. In the past year and a half, two LGBT folks have died in detention due to lack of access to HIV care, and according to LGBT organizations, we have identified more than 25 cases across the country, including at Adelanto, who have not had access to HIV care. This is a priority for the LGBT community. LA Justice Fund is an LGBT issue. That is why I ask here, I ask all of you here to stand and fight for legal representation for LA immigrants. I'm here also to ask for multi-year funding and help for detained immigrants. The fight is far from over. We must stand with our vulnerable communities.
Paula Khan, Rabia San, Rob Quan, Robin Samuels, and Ryan Wells. Again, that's Paula Khan, Rabia San, Rob Quan, Robin Samuels, and Ryan Wells.
Do I have two minutes or one minute?
One minute.
Okay. My name is Rabia San with Esperanza Community Housing. The majority of residents whom we serve actually reflect what's in the city, a majority of immigrants and mixed-status families. So, we urge you to renew the LA Justice Fund and make it a due process for all model. Looking at the CLA report, here are some additional considerations. The impact of the fund goes much deeper than just that raw number of 528 cases. For each case, it actually represents not just that individual, but the family, the community, and the city itself. The ripple effects are huge. The person detained might be the main breadwinner, the caretaker for parents and siblings, a parent or spouse themselves. So, what does this mean? While that person is in detention, that spouse may have to take on an additional job. Children are left without childcare. We live in a renter-majority city. This makes families more, more vulnerable to eviction and homelessness. In short, the success of the Justice Fund is this deeper impact. The city has a responsibility to all Angelinos, so we ask you to remove the restriction that this $1 million only be used for existing cases. We agree with the county's recommendations and also ask that the focus be on detained individuals, and we ask for a due process for all model. Anything less would be a failure on the part of the city to protect all.
Time's up. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Ryan Wells, and I'm representing the Los Angeles LGBT Center. I use he/him/his pronouns. I'm here to voice my strong support for the Los Angeles Justice Fund and to urge you all to renew funding for fiscal year 2020. Countless Los Angeles immigrant families, LGBT people, and survivors of domestic violence are being sent to unsafe conditions in detention centers and are being deported. LGBT asylum seekers are more vulnerable than ever as they experience a dangerous waiting period at a highly anti-LGBT Mexican border, longer detention periods, and homelessness once parole is, once paroled out of detention, all while they fight their asylum case. This crisis is so important to me because I know that LGBT immigrants are marginalized population that are at increased risk of victimization, physical violence, sexual violence, and other vulnerabilities while under detention. The LAJF provides an opportunity to protect LGBT immigrants from these human rights abuses by giving them access to legal counsel. I urge you to take a stand and fight for legal representation for immigrants when it matters most. Join us and renew the LAJF now. Thank
Hi, my name is Robin Samuels. I'm here on behalf of LA Voice, a multiracial, multi-faith coalition of churches, temples, and mosques, helping lead some of the most important fights for justice and equity in the city, and proud to be dedicated to 100% voter turnout and census participation. LA Voice does not provide direct service to immigrants, but we do refer our members and others to organizations and legal services that do. I'm a volunteer leader of our immigration committee. I work closely with immigrant leaders of every possible immigration status, and the message that they asked me to bring to you today on their behalf is this. As people of faith, we believe in redemption. Therefore, we want the LA City Justice Fund to help our most vulnerable adults. We also, like you, value family, and we believe that every person helped is one more family being given a chance to be spared the trauma and economic repercussions of being torn apart. Therefore, I urge the LA City Council to direct that their contribution to the LA Justice Fund go to adults at risk. Thank you.
Let me have Sarah Andre, Sarah Durham, Scott Doyle, Sean McMorris, and Shu Ming, Chair. Please line up.
How'd you call Paula Khan?
I did.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Paula Khan. I am sponsorship and community relations facilitator at Freedom for Immigrants, requesting your commitment to renew the LA Justice Fund to defend due process for all. We have been piloting and restructuring post-release programming to advance the shift from US immigrant detention to a humane immigration system. As someone who supports families directly impacted by detention and deportation, I can testify, one of the highest-reported unmet needs is legal representation, which has a track record of shaping the outcomes of removal proceedings. Los Angeles has the opportunity to be a leader in defending the right to universal representation. By renewing the LA Justice Fund, it will sustain infrastructure that has already been designed to defend the most vulnerable members of our community who are being pipelined into concentration camps where torture, cruel, and unusual punishment is rampant. If the LA Justice Fund is not renewed, we jeopardize the crucial monitoring of human rights violations lawyers are conducting during their visits to their clients in Adelanto. We must not divest from mechanisms for accountability of atrocities happening from our communities and in nearby rural communities. We must remain firm on our commitment to lead the defense of our immigrant.
Rob Quan, I'm wondering if our next step as a council will be to retract that resolution declaring ourselves a city of sanctuary. The CLA is essentially asking us to begin folding up the LA Justice Fund and turn our backs on the immigrant community by only focusing on existing cases. I hope this council is not under the mistaken belief that our president was removed a few months ago, or that Joe Biden would be any different. He would carry on the legacy of the deporter-in-chief. Last thing I want to highlight is, you know, when we talk about due process for all, I think back to three years ago when this council was deliberating on the LA Justice Fund. And the biggest proponent of the carve-outs was Mitch Englander, somebody who at the exact same time, that same month, was accepting cash bribes and the services of prostitutes. The contrast is striking. The hypocrisy is striking. This isn't simply about doing what's right. I believe in due process for all, including your colleagues, but it's about making sure we spend this money wisely and treat as many people as we can, serve as many clients as we can. Thank you.
Next. Didn't sound like it, but next. Next.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I'm with the Los Angeles LGBT Center. I use she, her, hers pronouns. I am here to voice my strong support for the Los Angeles Justice Fund and urge you to renew funding for fiscal year 2020. The fight is far from over, and LAJF can only continue with your support. The legal representation through LA Justice Fund is critical. Immigrants with lawyers are five times more likely to win their cases, and nearly 70% of immigrants in detention are unrepresented. Without a lawyer, immigrants win their cases only 6% of the time, and those who have a lawyer are five times more likely to succeed. We cannot leave them vulnerable, and LGBT asylum seekers are especially vulnerable. In the past year and a half, two trans asylum seekers have died in detention centers due to abuse, extended periods in solitary confinement, and lack of mental health and HIV care. We cannot see support for asylum seekers. The cessation of LAJF funding will enable the Trump administration to continue deportations with little to no limitations. Take a stand and fight for legal representation when it matters most. Renew the LAJF now.
I'm, oh, whoa, that was loud. I'm also Sarah Durham with the LGBT Center, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I'm here to voice my support for the LAJF and renew funding for the 2020 fiscal year. Immigrants with lawyers are five times more likely to win their cases, and LGBT adult asylum seekers are at more risk than ever. I watched my friend, Tanya Del Real, an LGBT immigrant, experience the real-life horrors lack of funding can cause. She's been subjected to emotional, physical, and mental abuse and is still dealing with this trauma every day. How can we expect Tanya and LGBT immigrants like her to survive if we don't even give them a fair fight? We need to take a stand and fight for legal representation for LA immigrants when it matters most. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Good afternoon. It's said that you can't improve what you don't measure. It's also said that you can slice and dice data to tell any story you'd like. The numbers you choose to focus on, to some extent, predetermine the narrative they will tell. So, let's look at some numbers. 528, the total number represented by the LA Justice Fund. That's a huge number, and as a previous speaker indicated, doesn't do justice to the number of people directly impacted. 114, the number of attorneys that presently constitute a legal defense infrastructure, not all of whom are paid for by the Justice Fund, but it wouldn't exist robust, as robustly without them. 31, the percentage of those represented released on bond. This is a huge victory. The CLA's report treats these open cases as if they were incomplete, a partial or not successes. This is a huge victory. 85, the miles away that Adelanto is, but it might as well be a world away. Five, the number of minutes that the attorney's shared office is from Adelanto, providing a much-needed oversight and legal defense right there on the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott.
Hello, I'm Shu Ming-Chier from the National Immigration Law Center. I want to urge you to prioritize detained immigrants for LA Justice Fund services. Many of the speakers have already addressed why detained adults are the most vulnerable and have the least access to services. And the expertise that's been built through the program so far positions LA Justice Fund organizations to successfully handle their cases. The release of detained adults benefits their families and communities on the financial, mental, and emotional level in ways that can't be measured by a simple number. I also strongly urge you to adopt a due process for all model, because this would promote racial justice. We've all heard about the unequal treatment of people of color by the criminal justice system, where people of color are more likely to be stopped by police, searched, charged with crimes, prosecuted, and convicted. This unequal racial treatment extends into the immigration system, where immigrants of color are much more likely to face deportation, particularly black immigrants. Not allowing people to have a due process for all model would subject them to a double and even a triple penalty simply for being immigrants of color. Thank you.
Here's Sean. Sean, you'll be followed by Tess Feldman, and then Zeno Osohobo.
Hello, I'm with the nonprofit 501(c)(3) Grassroots Alhambra. I'm here to support the renewal of the LA Justice Fund, because LA is a compassionate city, because all of us, with the exception of the indigenous peoples, are the product of immigrants. Everyone has worth, and we would be nothing without our immigrant communities, regardless of whether they are documented or not. LA sets the bar for so many cities across the country. By renewing this Justice Fund, you are saying that we are against the hateful policies that are harming not only our immigrant communities, but our social fabric. Please renew the LA Justice Fund.
Thank you, Sean. Tess Feldman, and then I have Zeno.
Good afternoon, my name is Tess Feldman. My pronouns are she/her/hers. I'm a resident of downtown Los Angeles. I work at the Los Angeles LGBT Center, where I'm the manager of the Immigration Law Project, where the LA Justice Fund has allowed me to fight with my clients from over 30 countries in their cases. The Los Angeles Justice Fund is not only about immigrant rights or representation. This is also about ending homelessness, increasing access to employment, keeping people of color safe, keeping families together, and ending systemic discrimination in the detention centers and immigration courts, right here in LA County and the city of Los Angeles. I want to tell you about a story about my client, I'll call Lucy. In 2017, they walked from Guatemala to the Mexico border with the LGBT caravan. In 2018, with the assistance of an LAJF attorney, they won release from Adelanto. In 2019, they appeared in immigration court with all evidence prepared for their final hearing, and their final court date will not be until 2022, despite a final motion to advance being denied by the court. This funding must be extended for the long term because our work has only gotten started. We ask for increased and full funding in support of the Los Angeles Justice Fund. Thank you.
Tess, can you clarify, what's the status of your client?
My client is currently an asylum seeker. They were admitted to the United States as an arriving alien. They have not broken any laws, they have no criminal history, and they're actually living right next door to my office at the Center for Youth and Family Services at the Los Angeles LGBT Center. So we are actively ending homelessness, providing them mental health, food, education. They're learning English. Their relationship to the LA Justice Fund goes far beyond the small amount of funding that was allocated for them to have an attorney with them for a few different court appearances. It's gone far beyond that to change their entire life. They're a wonderful, bright, dynamic person, and they're living safely as a resident of our city. They take the bus with me on the metro to go to court, and they're an active member of our community, living right next door to my office, solely because of the Los Angeles Justice Fund. And I have 64 more stories I'd like to share with you, if you'd allow me to. Thank you.
In due time. Thank you. Thank all of you for coming this afternoon. Thank you for bringing your testimony, your stories, your advocacy's. This concludes the public comment, and now we want to move to item number one: Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ms. Capri Maddox as the executive director of the Civil and Human Rights Department. This is pursuant to Charter Section 508(b). The mayor is making this appointment. Ms. Capri, you want to introduce yourself to our audience. Tell us what brings you here, what compels you to help us at this historic moment of transition, and this effort to institutionalize our efforts to fight for human and civil rights for all Angelinos.
Well, thank you, Councilman Sadio. Really is an honor to be here before you today. My name is Capri Maddox. I'm currently serving as the special assistant city attorney to our elected city attorney, Mike Fuhr, but I'm honored to be before you today as the mayor's nominee to serve as the Civil and Human Rights General Manager of our newly-formed department. Majority of our citizens in Los Angeles are people of color, as we know, and diversity is our greatest strength. It's basically the fabric of LA and why people all over come to Los Angeles to see the beautiful mosaic of our region. But compared to white Angelinos, people of color are faced with inequities in housing, education, as well as poverty, unemployment, and just civic engagement. My extensive experience has really drawn me to want to take on this role and this challenge. My varied levels of experience in public service provided me a great network to have resources to address some of these issues, and starting with the Housing Department is where I worked. And we know there's a great deal of discrimination in housing, employment, commerce, and education. And I've had experience in a couple of those places, and starting with the Housing Department, where I served, started my career, actually, as a student professional worker, and worked as a management assistant and management analyst in housing before I actually got mad at a slim lord and quit my job and went to law school. I later worked at Bedsetic Legal Services as a law clerk, and then I went on to the city attorney's office, where I continued to work in housing enforcement as an intern, and then I worked as a paralegal, worked my way up in the department. I served as a deputy city attorney in the central trials, neighborhood prosecutor program, complex litigation, and general counsel. When I served in general counsel, I was general counsel to neighborhood councils. And then I was appointed by Mayor Biaragosa to serve on the Board of Public Works, where I served as the president of that board, leading that department. And then I took another opportunity to go to LA Unified to work in the Office of Partnerships last year, as a matter of fact, which gave me other insights into education and some of the inequities there. I will have to say, this position will be one of my most critical and challenging assignments, but I'm ready and up to the task. I don't know if you would like me to go on and talk about the vision or the mission of the department. I'm ready to do so at this time.
Let me ask you, this will go forward to the council as a recommendation, but I want to ask you in terms of both, not just your vision, but talk about it operationally, what the first year looks like, what a ramp-up looks like, what your budget should look like in terms of the size of your staff.
Yes.
This is, I think you've got two hats in this role, one as the general manager of the department, and then two as the person who is the executive director of the commission that oversees the department. So talk about those challenges. I'm very interested, though, in terms of having had these varied job experiences that seem to prepare you perfectly for this job, what you envision the size of your staff, and then this budget in terms of what we have envisioned with respect to administrative law judges. So there's several questions there. One, ramp-up, overall budget, legal budget, and then the interface between the commission and your department.
Okay, all right. Thank you for those questions. I really appreciate them. I have an opportunity to give you a little, give you a window into what we actually will be doing. We're going to break up the department needs into four buckets: Commission Oversight, Outreach Education, Discrimination Enforcement, and the Office of Racial Equity that will be a part of our operation. The Commission Oversight will handle three commissions: the Civil and Human Rights Commission, the Commission on the Status of Women, and the Human Relations Commission. And then we will also have a place for outreach and community engagement, and that will use the extensive networks of our human relations advocates, as well as our CBOs, community-based organizations, to denounce and investigate acts of hate, create opportunities for community events, and lead anti-discrimination and anti-hate trainings. The anti-discrimination enforcement part of the operation will include a variety of steps to address discrimination with legal responses, such as letters of concern from myself, the executive director, voluntary mediation, and referrals to other legal entities, along with litigation that would be coming from us, with support from the Office of the City Attorney. I want to be very clear that we are not opposed to using media as a tool as well. Media access will be a tool for us as well. The Office of Racial Equity is the final part of our operation, which will actually allow us to see favorable versus non-favorable, or favorable or non-favorable evidence of diversity inclusion in hiring and promotion practices. And this will happen with a industry-wide dashboard that will provide the public access to corporate practices. We will also even highlight some things within the city family as well, but it will give us an opportunity to see exactly, when people say, "We believe in diversity and inclusion," this will provide an opportunity for us to see how many people in your industry-- we can pick Silicon Beach, for example-- how many people in that space will have positions, positions of power, how many people will be in higher-level positions and have promotional opportunities. And to see that on a dashboard is something that I think will be very revealing. The best disinfectant is sunlight. So I want to talk basically about some of the tools that we will be able to use in the city family that will help us to execute some of these goals. Starting off, my current request will be an exempt managing attorney, someone that has experience, preferably in a legal aid organization, serving as an AGM-type position. And that will be our legal AGM. I've also asked for an administrative AGM, Assistant General Manager, to help us as it relates to some of the community events that we would have having, the Office of Racial Equity, and other projects of that nature. We also have a support staff position, admin clerk request, another request for a commission executive assistant, senior project coordinator, management analyst. And we've also, we also will need a couple of folks from the city attorney's office to come on board to help us at the end of the calendar year, not the fiscal year, but the calendar year, closer to December of 2020. Two city attorneys, a hearing officer, and a paralegal. And for the paralegal and hearing officer, we would only need to pay for half of their salaries. In comparison to other jurisdictions, this budget, it will be pretty lean, but I think we can get a lot done in our first year with a number of events, you know, as relates to outreach, as well as processing a number of complaints, and many of which can be remedied by letters of concern or mediation. You should know that Pepperdine School of Law, my alma mater, has one of the best mediation programs in the country, and they have volunteered to provide assistance in that space. So we will not need resources at this time for mediation. They made it very clear that for the first year, they would love to support this effort, but for my second year, they would like to have someone to manage, for us, they have a city employee to manage the program and the volunteers, but this year, they will provide a staff person for me to oversee the program, as well as volunteers. I think the other question, and if you want to repeat your other question, I think I've answered most of what you would like to see us do within our first year. We have numerous events planned, and I believe that we could probably take in anywhere between 100 to 250 contacts of people on figuring out whether or not they have complaints. We have a wonderful group, and I'd like to just acknowledge Francisco Artega, that is seated here, that has done a great deal of outreach, and we are going to be acquiring staff from the Human Relations Commission. And those folks that we're acquiring will be a senior project coordinator, human relations advocate, those will be three spots, and a project coordinator. So we have a great deal of cooperation and support from H-SID in transferring those staff members over to us. I really wanted to commend Rushmore Cervantes, as well as Abigail Marquez from H-SID, for their support and their leadership in making sure that we have the tools to succeed here, and to thank them for their years of service with the HRC staff.
You'll have oversight on the Justice Fund, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge to have oversight of the Justice Fund, but in hearing some of the comments that we've heard today, it's definitely a resource that we've needed in a substantial way. So that has not been something that has brought to my attention at this time, but there are so many things that I'm learning as time goes on, where our office can be of assistance, and we're willing and able to step up if necessary. The other, the last things I'd like to say, Councilman, is, you know, when you think about the racial inequity, as the immigration community has been dealing with, you know, hate crimes in a substantial way, just so many of our stats, like 35% increase in hate crimes against our immigrant communities. We've had so many issues as relates to inequity. Our, you know, Latinx population, for example, has the highest contaminant score due to toxic releases, on and on and on. If you're African-American, transgender, you're five times more likely to become homeless. And there are just so many things that I don't have to tell folks in this room of why we need this now. This is a challenge. This is a lift for the city, and, but it's one that's needed now, because hate crimes, of course, and discrimination and other challenges have just skyrocketed, particularly since 2016. And that's why, when I received the call to step up, to take on this role, and use my skill set in this place, I could not let this opportunity to serve in this new capacity pass, because we do need leadership, and now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move this to the council with the recommendation. I congratulate you. I thank you. It's a big endeavor. It's a challenge for which we must do all that we can and pull all our resources. I'm impressed, and I think it benefits the city that you bring a varied experience in terms of organizational experiences, in terms of bringing together various groups. It may be the more appropriate home for some of the people who are moving from H-SID to this new department. This might be the more appropriate place for them. And so I just want to make sure that you have all the funding and the resources, and that we're scaling to the incredible challenges that we confront, not just in the Trump era, but hopefully, we exit the Trump era, and there'll be an incredible work of damage that's been done that we'll have to move into recovery mode, I imagine, is one way of thinking about it. So I want to commend you. Thank you for coming forth and meeting the challenge of leadership. Commend you for taking on this challenge, and note the thoughtfulness that you bring, no doubt by your experience. I know luminaries like David Sandoval in the audience, and I know he played a special role in your--
Very special.
--political and intellectual development, and so it brings confidence-- political and intellectual development, and so it brings confidence to myself and to the city that you're in this position, and I look forward to advocating for your appointment to the full council at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Next is a communication from the mayor for the appointment of Ms. Stacy Twilley? Twily? Hi, Stacy. You'll correct me. My name's Sidiyo. I've had to live with this. To the Human Relations Commission.
Hi. Thank you. Can you hear me? It's Twilly. Thank you. Thank you for having me here today.
Want to introduce yourself to our audience and to
Sure. My name is Stacy Twilly, and I am honored to be considered for the Human Relations Commission. I have lived in Los Angeles for twenty years. I have an undergraduate degree in journalism and a graduate degree in social science and anthropology. For seventeen years, I worked in media. I was co-founder of the largest local and city regional magazine company in the United States, and for fourteen years, I have served and volunteered with International Medical Corps, working globally and serving as a global ambassador for the, advocating for their rights for mental health and maternal and child health for refugees with the Human Rights Organization. What else would you like to know about me?
Well, what your vision is, what you anticipate, what confronts the Human Relations Commission today?
Well, I think a number of issues confront the Human Relations Commission today, much of which I've heard today about the immigrant justice, which is one of the areas which I'm most interested in as part of the Human Relations Commission, is protecting the rights of immigrants in the city, particularly women and girls. And another area within the Human Relations Commission of interest for me is engaging more young people in the, in the dialogue between different groups in the city to come to a safe place and a productive place for dialogue. And then the third would be to kind of strengthen the trust between communities and local law enforcement. Those are the three areas I'm most interested in.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. I have no hesitation in recommending you to the council for appointment at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number three, we're going to have a report on the, from the CLA's report relative to the status of the Los Angeles Justice Fund.
Sir? The report before you is in response to a request by this committee to report relative to the L.A. Justice Fund. Your committee instructed our office to, one, work with partners to identify efficiencies of the justice fund, two, review other cities that provide legal representation services, and, three, to report on other immigration legal services models. By way of background, the city contributed $2 million for the Los Angeles Justice Fund, which was established as a partnership between the city, the county of Los Angeles, the California Community Foundation, and the Weingard Foundation, for a combined total of $7.9 million to provide legal representation services to individuals at risk of deportation. To respond to the committee's request, our office met with the program's legal service providers, LAJF Partners, and considered input from all stakeholders. We also reviewed quarterly reports and the evaluation conducted by Vera. Based on this research and conversations, we would like to note the following. The LAJF contract will come to an end June 30th, 2020. CCF reports that the city funds have been fully allocated and are expected to be expended by then. As of the last reporting period, September 2019, over 500 cases had been accepted for representation. Of those, 438 remain open and 248 were funded by the city. LAJF Partners, County CCF, and Weingard Foundation have each committed $1 million to continue to provide legal services. Stakeholders generally recommend program efficiencies by amending eligibility requirements centered around universal representation, the local residency requirement, and criminal background checks. Our office recommends that any action that could expand the pool of immigrants be considered in the context of funding availability and the potential impact to existing cases. Continuing to provide funding for legal representation is a policy decision. If the council wishes to continue to provide these services in the future, it is recommended that the council approve a one-year extension to the current LAJF to continue to provide due process to existing open cases. Request the mayor to include a $1 million allocation in the budget and instruct staff to report with a plan for a longer-term, multi-year funding program. These actions would align with how the county intends to proceed. I am available to answer any questions.
Let me ask that you begin to think about contextualizing where we're at with respect to the services we provide. It's important for us to know the political environment that this takes place in, and so specifically, we have an election in November, and clearly, work will go forward beyond November, and so the question is what that looks like in a multi-year funding beyond November, and what that looks like in a Trump administration versus a Democratic administration. And so there's, I'm asking for you guys to think about that and maybe report back in terms of, obviously, we're in a very defensive posture in the post-Trump era. Obviously, we'll be in a different position, where servicing the immigrant community may take on a different, more proactive, prospective, and more affirmative course, and so I'm asking you guys to think about that, what it would look like.
Definitely. So, and in the report back, we would definitely work with different partners to come up with a strategy that considers both a scenario with the Trump administration and without the Trump administration. I do believe there would be a need for services. The question would be what type of services or what the focus would be moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you for all that you've done and the work that you've done. Is this clear at the desk?
Item number three, I believe recommendations should be made. There's a recommendation below that says, that states that if the city council wishes to continue the LAJF beyond the June 30th, 2020,
Correct.
It recommended that council, and then there's a request for the mayor to include $1 million allocation for fiscal year 2021.
Correct.
Is that what we would like to move forward with?
So you may, you may actually request to, you may recommend all three options. The one, the, item number one provides the one-year extension plus makes the request for the funding allocation. The other two are report backs on different models.
Correct. That's why I want you to put that within the framework of the, the political context, right? So that's the question with respect to multi-year funding and how we look at this.
Correct. Would you like me to read those actions into the record?
And you note my comments, right?
Okay. So item number one is to provide a one-year extension of the LAJF from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, and request the mayor to include a $1 million allocation in the proposed fiscal year 2020-21 budget to continue to provide legal services to existing cases under current program guidelines. Number two is, if the council wishes to develop a multi-year program, instruct the CLA and CAO to report with a strategic plan for a long-term, multi-year funding program for removal defense. The CLA and CAO will report with a plan that will include a negotiated memorandum of understanding with the county of Los Angeles, Department of Consumer and Business Affairs, Office of Immigrant Affairs, to better align metrics, reporting requirements, the identification of additional funding contributions, to promote the sustainability of the program, and recommendations for a reduced number of legal service providers. If the council wishes to create an independent program, instruct the CLA to work with the city attorney and CAO to report on the feasibility of creating a request for proposals consisting of immigrant legal service providers with demonstrated capacity and experience. And number four, request the CAO with the assistance of the California Community Foundation to report on the impact to open cases should funding not be available in the future.
Okay. So be the order. Any other items at the desk?
No, and I, the last thing, Mr. Chair, if you would like to note and file the CAO report dated March 5th, 2020, relative to the LAJF status report, and that's from November 2017 to September 2019.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then you have my notes with respect to the changing political environment that will take place in November.
Yes, the report.
And for that to be considered as part.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.